What are the intentions for enforcement on city buses and at the polling places next week?
I would defer to city attorney post.
Well, as far as voting locations, that's an exception if you're there for voting. The reason that is, is that to be a qualified elector, I can't include having a mask on to vote. There are statutory requirements, 18, a resident, and I don't, we can't change that statute for voting. So that's an exception. As far as enforcement is concerned, there is a provision in there that we can ask the people to leave the facility if they don't have a mask on, if you don't fit with one of the exceptions.
Very good. Thank you.
Council Vice President Mock, last on the resolution that I worked with, Council Member, I don't know if you have any follow-up words. I tried to summarize what we worked on, but I don't want to steal all your words if Council Member Doc. already follow.
I'll certainly have comments, but there are quite a few people in the room that it seems would like to make public comment, and you've hung in there with us this entire time, and so I appreciate you engaging in this process. If it would be okay with you, I think it would be courteous of their time to let them speak first, because I'm sure this conversation will go on.
Okay. So then, I have one comment card. In an effort to be fair to everyone, because I want to be fair and equitable, we're going to ask everybody limit to three minutes, and I will let you know when you're at two minutes and 30 seconds, and then we will thank you for participating in the discussion at three minutes. So I will start off with Cody Harris, because that's who I have. And then after that, if you can fill out a comment card and come up and say what you'd like to say, and then you can drop it off there so that staff has it for the record. But, Mr. Harris, we'll start with you.
Thank you very much for letting me come out here and just kind of speak my mind. I appreciate what you guys do. I just wanted to put my opinion out there. I would like you guys to allow local businesses and people to determine what they would like to do in their local business as well. I've been to several businesses that don't necessarily require it, but would recommend it. People obviously feel different about it, depending on who you ask. I just would like you to leave it in their hands to determine either the person that's going into the store or the business owner as well. I guess that's about all I have. I just would like you just to leave it up to them in this particular matter. Thank you.
And for the record, that was 35 seconds. So, that was very efficient, just as a reference.
Please come forward to the podium if you want to speak.
Council Vice President Mock, members of the council, city leaders, thank you for having me here. My name is Matthew Turnus. I'm the Student Body President at the University of North Dakota. Back in September, our student government passed a resolution similar to the resolution before you all today, asking for the city to consider and implement a face-covering requirement that is consistent with that of the university. When that resolution was written, there were around 200 cases in the county. I checked earlier today, and it was 756 in one month, and those are new cases. That growth is shocking and concerning for a lot of my constituents. You know, I actually just recently got out of isolation myself. I tested positive a few weeks ago. I'm cleared by the state, don't worry. In my isolation, it was tough. As my student health doctors describe, I'm young and healthy, but COVID spared me no symptoms, or it gave me all the symptoms. Fever, cough, shortness of breath, some of which still sticks with me today. If you notice, my breathing pattern is a little off, but I assure you, I'm fine. Just down the hall from me was a friend of mine who had no symptoms, and I think that's one of the scariest parts of COVID, is that there's such a wide array of effects on people. When I think of masks, I think of my fellow classmates wanting so desperately to stay on campus and in the community. When I think of masks, I think of my neighbor who I had a conversation with the other day, who expressed that they're worried about job closure because of COVID. They need to work every day to make their bills, to pay their bills. When I think of masks, I think of my mom and dad, who have underlying health conditions and who I've only seen three or four times since the pandemic started. When I think of all the strategies we can employ to keep our neighbors safe, this piece of cloth around my face is the first one. A consistent policy implemented by the city provides clarity, low risk for confusion, and a consistent standard amidst our community. I'm sure, like you all and myself as elected officials, we swore an oath when we started our terms, to always act in the best interests of our constituents. And I know you all will do that in this discussion, and I'm excited to see the discussion move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mark Trappke. I'm the president of the Northern Valley Labor Council, AFL-CRO, the unions. And why am I here tonight? It's that us, as the [inaudible], we represent thousands of members in City of Grand Forks here, and it's our duty to make sure that our membership is protected as well as it can be protected. We also represent thousands and thousands of workers who don't have a right to be in a union, but need a voice, need a voice, and we speak for them. We also live in a community, and our community is Grand Forks. And as members of a community, we have a right, but we also have a duty and a moral obligation to speak the truth. And for us, you know, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the truth is the mask mandate works. It's there to protect. The other thing is, is some people say, "Well, there's no fines, fees, or assessments." Okay, but the city, you as elected officials, have a moral obligation to step forward and lead. It's your position, you need, to use that moral authority and step forward and do the right thing. There's a thousand reasons that you could come up with not to lead, but the people of this city and each one of your wards, and you, Mr. Mayor, who was elected by all the population, ask you to lead. And so I want to make it perfectly clear that we, as a labor movement, want to wear masks. We're not worried about the fee or anything like that, but what we do want is social justice. And I know these things ain't easy, you know, but we do have a duty to make sure all citizens of our great city are right, that we don't have to read about people catching COVID or people dying in our nursing homes. And so I encourage you all to step forward and do the right thing and pass a mayor's resolution, and I thank you for doing the city resolution, Mr. Mayor, but also our city council, and so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Other folks that want to come forward?
I appreciate what's been said about city leaders, public leaders, and their duty to lead properly. I don't want it to get confused, though, that leading and doing the right thing is the same as taking away someone else's choice. As I stand here tonight, to be honest, I feel disrespected because of this ordinance before us. The government relies upon my strength and decision-making as a regular taxpayer so that I can help fund its programs, but it apparently doesn't trust my decision-making when it comes to a virus with a 99-plus percent survival rate. I'm allowed to make my own decisions when it comes to buying a house or buying a car, having a family, choosing a career, and even electing public officials, but I'm apparently not allowed to make my own decisions regarding protecting my health and that of my family from a virus with a 99-plus percent survival rate. I'd like to remind the council that you work for us, and you weren't elected to make these decisions for us. The effectiveness of lockdowns, masks, and the rest is highly debatable. It is disrespectful and overbearing to make our life decisions for us when the rationale is, at best, hotly debated by experts the world over. I call on Councilwoman Mock, Mayor Bochensky, and the rest of the city council to let local businesses and individuals make their own decisions for their own future. We pay taxes like adults. Let us protect ourselves like adults, too. As a gentle reminder, your decision tonight may affect your own future in politics. Thank you.
Thank you. And did we have a name for the record? Do we have it for...
Yes, I put the card here. My name is Ethan Custer. Thank you.
We'll have people keep coming forward, please. If you can, state your name for the record and then drop the card so that staff knows for the minutes.
My name is David Waterman. I live on Cottonwood Street. Graduated from the University of North Dakota with a degree in, Bachelor of Science degree in Industrial Technology. And during the course of my studies, I studied industrial safety and personal protective equipment, more commonly known as PPE. I've written scripts, produced a film on the proper use and maintenance of PPE for a large company in Minnesota. I'm a firm believer in PPE. It's important that we protect our bodies and that we protect other people who are in dangerous situations. But I want you to know that there's no such thing as a universal PPE. So for example, these rubber gloves are considered PPE in the context of taking someone's blood. It protects the nurse or the phlebotomist from getting somebody else's bodily fluids on them. These are not considered PPE in the context of using an arc welder. They don't work for that. So all PPE is designed to work within a particular context. And with that in mind, I want to address the issue of cloth masks. So the experts that the CDC has put out this publication called "Operational Considerations for Personal Protective Equipment in the Context of Global Supply Shortages for Coronavirus Disease," is what they say. Non-medical fabric masks are not considered PPE, and their ability to protect healthcare workers is currently unknown. Some studies suggest it may lead to a false sense of protection and even increase influenza-like illness relative to wearing a medical mask. World Health Organization advice on the use of masks in the context of COVID-19, the context of COVID-19 cloth masks is the subject at hand. They state a non-medical, which they refer to as a, which is also a fabric mask, "A non-medical mask is neither a medical device nor personal protective equipment." OSHA, NIOSH, and the CDC put out this publication, Hospital Respiratory Protection Program Toolkit, and they state this. "Face masks by design do not seal tightly to the wearer's face. Therefore, they allow unfiltered air to easily flow around the sides of the face mask into the breathing zone and respiratory tract of the wearer. In addition, the materials used for face masks are not regulated by their ability to filter particles that are, and are known to vary greatly between models. This makes it possible for small particles to pass through or around the face mask and to be inhaled by the wearer." This is in bold print. This is why they are not considered respiratory protection. "Face masks do not," all caps, "provide the wearer with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller particles, including those emitted into the room via a patient who is exhaling or coughing." I've left this for you. I strongly recommend it. One of the staff members has this. There's a copy for everyone here. It is called "On the Purported Efficacy and Safety of Face Masks Used to Stop Transmission of COVID-19," written by Daniel Stanislawski, Ph.D. He holds a PhD in biochemistry and molecular biology. I strongly urge that you study this document thoroughly. It's a seven-page document with 10 pages of referenced footnotes. It's exhaustively produced, and I would urge you to look at that carefully before you make any decisions going forward about face masks. Thank you very much.
Other comments?
Hello, Council Mock and council members here. My name is Scott. My last name is Reinhardt, and I'm like a small, you know, business owner here in town. I just want to let you know that what if masks really aren't working? The reason that I'm asking this is CDC has done a couple of studies on this. One was with 1,400 people, and another one, this last study they did with, they surveyed 154 people. Now, of the 154 people that were surveyed, this is on October 12th, the previous 14 days before the illness began, 71% of them reported that they wore masks on a always basis. And another 14%, they said they wore masks often, which adds up to 85%. Now, mask, if you take a look at it, you see a pen, right? You see this little tip on the pen here, right? Everyone see the little tip? Now, the coronavirus is 1,000th size of that little tip on that pen. It's that 1,000th size of a piece of hair. Now, if you take a look at masks, it's like that, it's just, it's not a good way to, I don't think it really protects against the, actually, the, like you know, coronavirus. And now, we are getting to cases, right? And as far as, with the cases that we have here, how many of those cases with the health here, how many of those cases were actually sick? How many, what type of symptoms do they have? Those are the things that we should track. I mean, are they having, are they having a couple of symptoms? Are they having a few symptoms? You're asking all these questions. Why don't we, why don't we track those? Because how many of those cases, or 300 and some cases for this last week, and how many of them don't even have any, have any, you know, sickness out of it? Do we know those, those answers? Probably not. We should be knowing those answers. Because like, like another guy said, 99.7% survival rate, why are we locking down everything? And those people that end up in the hospital, there are people like Dr. Barlett out of Texas. He came up with a treatment program that's called Bunesonide. And, and so this one, if you go to bunesonideworks.com, he has a treatment. He's treated over 400 COVID patients with this, with this treatment, and has had zero deaths. There is treatments out there that'll do this. There should be nobody getting sick. There should be nobody being killed, being taken over by this disease, because there are things out here. And this is a very proven effective way that it works, and it's very cost-effective, less than $3 per dose. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Franz. I'm at 715 Walnut Street. I didn't really intend to speak tonight, but the information just presented by the last three speakers, I thought needed a brief response, and I'll be very brief. Of course, of course, my cloth mask doesn't protect me. It protects you folks from it. It does that by, not perfectly, but it does keep my droplets from coming out, and therefore it keeps a lot of virus and bacteria from coming out, hence the protection from COVID. This is recognized by public health experts throughout the nation, place closed as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone wanting to speak who hasn't spoken yet?
I'm Sonya Seaberson. I live on a farm. I come to Grand Forks and I shop. And I'd like to have you guys think about something tonight as you go to bed, you all really smart men and women. You have a cloth over your face. You have a cloth over your face, and you're breathing in carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide. Does that make sense to your mind? Does it, does it make sense? There are young people fainting. There are young people not functioning anymore. Where did we get away from taking ownership of our health besides wearing a mask, taking some supplements, getting some sunlight, moving around, being full of life, having joy, not stress and fear? That takes away from our immune system. I bet some of you were athletes. I was an athlete. You're breathing in your air constantly. Doesn't, does it not feel funny when something's over your face and you, all day long? I just, I just want you to think about it. Here's common sense. We should be promoting health and, and like this gentleman said about, if I'm worried about getting it, 99.9 whatever are coming through it. I'm going to live life to the fullest. This is the only day I have. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have more folks that want to speak? I don't want to cut people off before we go to the council discussion.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Dawson Duchuk. I'm a student at UND. I have a couple of things to say. My thoughts are a little bit scrambled right now. I didn't write anything down. I wasn't really intending to speak tonight, but I have a couple important things I think are important to keep in mind during this whole discussion. I was just Matt's neighbor in the roadway inn. We had COVID together. Not sure where either of us got it. We went out to lunch at Speedway the other day before we got it. They don't require masks there. We wore masks into the facility. Could've gotten it there. I went to Northside Cafe. They don't require masks. I was wearing a mask in. Other people around me weren't wearing masks. I have been very inswore of wearing masks in the community, but as most of you probably saw in my email, they're not very effective, but only used by me. It's mostly to keep my droplets from spreading and less to keep yours out from me. I was fine. I had a little bit of a cough. I had a headache for a couple of days. I wasn't really worried for my safety. It was obviously inconvenient. I didn't want to go to the roadway inn for a week. I would much rather stay in my home, be able to see people, but I did what I had to do to slow the spread and prevent it from being others. I was very worried this summer, a month or two ago, when both my grandparents were sent to the hospital with COVID. My grandfather has COPD. He has breathing issues, and he was sent to the ICU. He lost like 40 pounds, and I was worried I was never going to see him again. He thankfully did pull through, but he is still hardly able to walk. He had to do occupational therapy. It really devastated my grandfather, and he's only 65 this year. He's not even in the category of extreme elderly people that we see dying all the time in this country. Masks are an inconvenience. They're obviously not the first thing I choose to put on in the morning when I get dressed. But I have played volleyball in a mask for hours and been totally fine. We have to wear seat belts to protect ourselves and others. We have to wear shirts into buildings, even when it's hot outside, and it's uncomfortable to wear a shirt when it's 100 degrees, and we do that without worrying about it. It's second nature. And I think that wearing a mask during this important period in time where a lot of things are up in the air and we can't do a whole lot, one thing we can do is wear a mask. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak? Otherwise, we're going to close public comment. Come forward, please, if you'd like to.
I don't even know your names. My name is Sally McKinnon. I'm a citizen of Grand Forks. I want to ask you people that support the masks, can any one of you here bring up testimonies as Mr. Waterman brought up? Do you have actual facts at your disposal, papers and references, anything that you can give us that shows that people have done tests to prove what he said is wrong? Do you have that, Mr. Weber? Do any one of you have that? And another thing I want to ask you, these masks, when we are all expected to wear them, what if 100% of people in Grand Forks wore them? And what if these things are causing, when we breathe out, it's not going forward, but the air that we're breathing is staying stagnant in those masks? And it's accumulating whatever virus there is, getting attached to the condensation, to the wet, the droplets of, you know, from our breathing in and out that rest under those masks? How many of the people that wear those are breathing that bad air in and out, in and out? How many of them are going to get sick? If you've got 100 people out here, and not everybody's wearing masks, and not everybody gets sick, what about the ones that are wearing them? Their chances of getting sick from that environment, breathing in and out, are a lot worse, I think, than walking in six feet apart out in the society without masks. I really want to see the scientific evidence that any one of you can produce that says that masks are necessary here. I don't want to just hear somebody listen to Dr. Fauci on the TV or listen to somebody on TV or in the news. I want, and I don't just want opinions, I want facts. If there are references that somebody, a layperson here in Grand Forks can bring up, then some of you people here that are in favor of masks ought to be able to bring up adequate evidence to support your cause, not just hearsays and not just repetition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jared Lundabee. Thank you for taking my comments. Mayor Bochensky, you played in the NHL. Did you play in a T-shirt and did you play in a ball cap? I assume no is the answer, because it would not have protected you from getting hit by someone like Zdeno Chara. In negative 10 degrees, I assume everyone on this council does not go outside in a T-shirt and walk around and shovel, because a T-shirt is not sufficient to protect you when it's negative 10 degrees. This mask, this is a 100-year epidemic pandemic that has spread worldwide. This is a bandana. You say this is going to protect me. You say this is fine. That's a piece of cloth. Somebody else has got a dirty piece of underwear on their face or a T-shirt or you name it. Nobody in this room that I see has a single filter on their mask. What are we really doing? You're going to mandate that we put a piece of cloth on our face? Maybe it makes us feel better. I get it. I understand. We're trying to do something to stop the spread. Does it work? And if it doesn't work, it's not your job to make someone else wear it any and everywhere. I hope you remember that.
Just say I got my money on Mayor Bochensky versus Chara, so. You're the only one.
I'm Jeannie Waterman. Thank you for allowing the public here to engage on this important conversation. One of the things that I've become aware of is that 19... that in 1918, there was a Spanish flu and that, uh, the majority of the people that died, died from a bacterial infection which was caused because they, well, we don't know the cause, but a mandate was made for the masks. So my concern is how much of this infection that's being raised up is actually being self-induced? We know that these particles, um, the virus can be inside of us. It's not alive. So a lot of these testings really aren't very accurate because you can be positive just based on the fact that you've got the dead virus inside your system. So we don't know whether it's alive or it's dead. We've got people who are asymptomatic because I believe in, I think that it's scientifically proven that they don't have a live virus in their system. So with that, those, those, those people aren't infected. We don't have really accurate, uh, numbers and I'm starting to lose my train of thought, but I just think that it's really important that we recognize that masking doesn't seem to be an effective way. I think that a lot of the sickness and the numbers that we're seeing is because of, of self-inflicted, um, sickness based on the fact that you're wearing a mask and there's all this moisture and bacteria that builds up. And we just need to look a little bit more deeply, perhaps look at that article that Mr. Waterman was, was talking about. Anyways, thank you very much.
I'm going to talk about things from my high school daughter's perspective. She's a very active athletic girl friend to everybody and kids in that high school are breaking down right now. And they're high school kids that can handle their emotion a little bit better. Think about the little kids. Kids are breaking down right now and all everybody can think about is covering your face, breathing in your own air. It's all virtual signaling and to be honest, I'm over it. I'm over teachers yelling at my daughter in school because she adjusts her mask and she could kill so-and-so's grandmother. The pressure that you guys are, everybody is putting on our children over a virus that they are going to be fine through they're not getting sick from. These kids are not getting sick. Influenza is worse on them. But my daughter has hockey players calling her bawling because the pressure and the stress that they are under right now is more than any of them can handle. And they fear walking down the hall, adjusting their mask, taking it off, doing something wrong and being isolated for two more weeks because of it. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of seeing kids destroyed, depressed, anxious, sad, over something that is not affecting them. Leave them alone. These masks are not helping. If you're worried about your grandma, whoever it was, worry about your grandma. You take care of your grandma. That is not my daughter's responsibility. And I'm done. When I walked through that high school last week, they're not talking, they're not laughing, they're not smiling, they're not communicating. They are robots and this needs to end. You guys work for us. We don't work for you. And what you are doing or potentially doing is wrong. Our kids are not going to go from school wearing these god awful bacteria-infected masks to wanting to go out and be with their friends and being masked up and harnessed and suffocated. That is not okay. And you have children of every age breaking down. Athletes, geniuses, everybody, they're losing it and none of this is okay. These kids are getting sick right now from this, not from COVID, but from the measures taken to prevent it. It is not okay. And this is going to make things worse.
Hey, Jean. Uh, my name is Ray Lindeman. I'm a student at U N D. Uh, I also originally didn't plan to speak tonight. I was more interested in hearing the discussion, but what I'd really like to express is what I'm also tired of seeing. I'm tired of seeing my peers and my friends have to go to the roadway inn because they got sick. I'm tired of seeing the toll it takes on their mental health, on their grades and their futures. We've heard a lot tonight about the effectiveness of these different kind of masks and their, um, ability to act as personal protective gear. And what we haven't seen is the comparison. We've seen these studies talked about that look at masks in a vacuum, but what happens is when everyone abides by mask mandates, the before and after risks are decreased and that's scientifically proven. So I'd like us to look at the comparison and the risk we run with and without the mask mandate. Without the mask mandate, we run the risk of the situation getting worse. We've heard a lot about businesses and their choice, but I think what's going to hurt businesses is when U N D closes and students have to go home and can't engage with the Grand Forks community, can't engage with businesses. And I think what's going to hurt businesses is when those students can't go downtown, they can't go to Chick-fil-A because they have to go back to California or they have to go back to Texas or they have to go across the country back home because we didn't get on top of this when we could've. I think the time to act is now. I think we should nip this in the bud while our capacity is still at yellow. I think we have a responsibility to be responsible for our own actions. We talked a lot about our own personal choice, but this mask isn't about protecting yourself. It's not about protecting, you know, your fellow high schoolers. It's about protecting the people who are most vulnerable. And it's not me. It's the elderly and people with pre-existing conditions. And what I'm tired of seeing is friends get affected, family members get gravely ill. So I'm asking you, let's be smart, let's be safe and let's believe the science.
I'm Mary Dietrich and I did not fill out a form. I just wanted to say I am a recovering COVID person and I find that when I wear a mask, my oxygen levels drop, which is not something I want. It is also what happens to my good friend. And I just want to say that there are many studies out there that say that the mask wearing is not as effective as most people think. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we're going to close the public comment section. Uh, Mr. Armopras, did you want to say anything? I don't. You don't have to. I just want to make sure that we get every.
I've been here before and, uh, at that point I was asked a series of questions about what, uh, our position at U N D is. And, uh, let me just remind, um, council that, uh, we had a mandate in place to wear face coverings, uh, to keep distances. And the masks, uh, that we were asking people to wear, they were required indoors when interacting with others, six feet or farther. It didn't matter if they were interacting, they had to wear a mask. Outdoors, uh, the requirement was if you couldn't keep a safe distance, wear a mask. We believed deeply in this. We felt the medical science, uh, established this as a, as an effective practice and a way to mitigate the risk of transmission of the virus. And, um, and so we believed this strongly that we adopted these measures immediately, um, uh, beginning in the summer. And, uh, last time I was here, I said it would be really nice if the, um, the city had the same set of standards that we had on campus, namely because we have students, faculty and staff members who live in one world on campus and a different world off campus. And, um, and so I, I urged at that point, uh, consistency, but I recognize it's a policy decision of the council and the mayor to do so. Uh, so now, uh, as this decision rests before you know that, uh, U N D and I in particular would, um, would certainly appreciate that consistency being achieved, uh, through, uh, through steps taken by this elected body. And, uh, I know that we've seen, uh, good success. Uh, I think masks have reduced transmission and I think we would accept, expect to see the same, uh, throughout the city of Grand Forks. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think with that, we will take, um, the discussion to the council. Does anyone want to start the discussion?
I'll, I'll move approval of the resolution.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll take a second.
Mr. Veen, a second. So I appreciate everyone coming tonight and sharing their thoughts. I know that, that may sound hollow, but I, I truly do because the only way that we can make any kind of actual decision to move forward either way, we do need to hear all sides of the story. And we live in a time when we have so politicized conversations that instead of people who perhaps don't support a mask mandate, instead of contacting me, they'll contact somebody else who perhaps feels more inclined to that. Except that I need to hear it and I need to hear those, those reasons behind why not and why in support, um, in order to make a well-reasoned decision or even to move forward. And so I, I truly do appreciate the fact that you sat through some not really exciting conversations, admittedly, uh, in order to get this far and to be a part of this process. Not everybody does that. In fact, very few do in a city of over 50,000 people. Um, I still have only received maybe 100 emails. Um, and so that's a pretty stark testament to the fact that you're here and you're willing to share your perspective. So I appreciate it. This resolution was meant to be a draft, as it's given to you for discussion, because I do think that, um, we didn't need to reinvent the wheel. Fargo, Minot, um, other places, Devil's Lake just tonight said that they would be moving forward with the mask mandate that will go into effect on Thursday, but they're currently still writing it. Um, many places are going forward with these things as, um, as a way to best protect their whole community. Um, we've talked a lot about fear in the last few months, whether we live in fear, whether we're not afraid of fear or we're not fearing for our lives or fearing a virus. But sometimes, you know, we need to actually put that aside, some of the rhetoric and say, we need to take a step, we need to make an action, we need to lead. We can't allow fear of not being popular or of not being re-elected or of not being right necessarily to stop us from moving forward in humility. We are not infallible people. My husband would tell you that, probably pretty readily. Because we pass a resolution, because we pass an ordinance, because the mayor issues an emergency order, it does not mean that it stands into perpetuity and perpetuity. It can be changed and that's the way that the government should run. It changes with people, it changes with time, it changes with need, but it changes to best serve its community as a whole. And I think that that is the most important part. And so even if I don't vote in the same way that you perhaps would prefer, I do want you to know, um, that I appreciate you engaging and I appreciate the opportunity to try something and I appreciate you holding us accountable. So if this doesn't help as we move forward, that you'll continue to dialogue, you'll continue to show up, you'll continue to help us make Grand Forks the kind of place where you can come to a council meeting and you can share your opinion and you can be heard. I'm ready to vote if you are.
Uh, Mr. Weigle, I think has something to add.
I think the, one of the great things about, uh, government, if there is any, is that we can have a conversation and like last time when the resolution was brought forward or asked for us to discuss it, it was, it was the last second before the end of a meeting. Tonight, we've heard from people on both sides and, uh, I think there's a good level of information that come from both sides and I understand both, both sides of what they're saying. But what I am disappointed in the fact of is that us as council members didn't even get to say anything before we had a motion and a second on the floor. That's, that's what's frustrating to me. I do have concerns and I'll ask for an amendment to the resolution. Um, I, I've always, uh, kind of jabbed at our federal government because nobody can ever seem to get along and nobody's ever willing to compromise. And, and I came here tonight as somebody that wasn't a fan of a mask mandate, but willing to compromise. As far as the resolution, there is a enforcement portion of that of $250. I'm not a fan of it. And for the reason is, is back in April, I sent a, a message to our public health director and there was a quarantine order. If somebody broke that and they were positive, um, they could be charged criminally. And what I thought of that is we have somebody that's posted on Facebook that they're COVID positive. They've got, we've got pictures of them continuing to leave their apartment infecting people, but we won't even charge them out for it. And that was a, an order from the governor. But here we've got a resolution that's, that's on the floor that we're willing to charge somebody $250 for not wearing a mask when they may be perfectly healthy. I don't think that's right. We can't do one and not the other. Secondly, when I look at the ending of the resolution, I know we've talked about, um, currently it says when the council, basically decides to take the resolution off, what I would like to see is if, if people are willing to compromise, that we, we move it to our local public, public health dashboard. And if we're in a high risk, I'm willing to have that mask mandate for indoor items, um, similar to what U N D is at. I think if they're outside and they can maintain a social distance, that, that that mask mandate doesn't apply, but I would ask that, that those amendments, um, I would ask that we place those amendments to the resolution.
Um, oh, Mr. Weber.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to make the amendment, uh, to the motion to drop the line about, uh, the, the $250 fine. Uh, the other, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to make that amendment first. Uh, so I think it would go to Mr. Veen, who seconded the motion, if he's willing to accept that.
So you made the motion and you're all right with amending to remove the $250.
Dropping the clause about the $250 fine.
Mr. Veen, you were the second. Um, Mr. Gostad, I. So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as is. So now the question is, do we need an amendment?
You need a motion.
We need a motion.
As I understand, you, uh, council member Weber, uh, moved to amend, um.
Can anyone second that or does?
Anybody can second that.
Okay, so is there?
And then you, and then you vote on.
The amendment.
Yeah, that the motion has been amended, not that you're voting in favor of it, but that the motion has been amended.
So there's a motion to amend the resolution to remove that $250 fine. Is there a second?
I, I guess I'm just curious why we're not discussing more and then holding our amendments to the end. I'm sure, I have, I have things to say and I would like to, yeah, I don't, I don't think that, is that, do we have to do that now?
Well, yes, there's a motion, so we have to either have a second to.
I'll withdraw my motion to amend for, for this time, um, to allow others to speak.
Okay, so we're, Mr. Weber, you actually made that motion. So will you withdraw that?
I'll withdraw that.
Okay. So maybe before we do too many more motions or amendments, um, let's give council members an opportunity to speak. So, Mr. Cavami, did you have something you wanted to?
Sure. Brad, I don't want to. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments tonight. Um, I think for a second, you know, I've been debating on this personally and I've been against, um, infringing on personal rights, um, but if we pull out science and we pull out health and we think about, so me personally, I ran because I think Grand Forks is a great community and I want to see Grand Forks thrive. And for me, that has a lot to do with economic development. And, and when I think economic development, my two biggest drivers are the schools and specifically U N D and the school district. So how you keep those kids in school allows parents to work and how you keep U N D on campus allows them to spend their money here. So no science, no health, let's just not even worry about. Let's just assume everybody is going to be fine, but regardless, we have to quarantine. We're having to go through these steps, so there's no changing no changing that. Nobody's coming up here to argue, you know, quarantining for two weeks. So, it seems like everyone's accepted that, and that's just the way it's going to be. So, for me, all I care about is keeping the schools open, keeping the university open. If you look at the infection rate at the school district, it seems like they, whatever they're doing, I'm not sure what the magic is, but whatever they're doing has kept the infection rate low, and allowed my six-year-old daughter, who's fine wearing a mask, who wears a mask on the way to the car, even though I don't ask her to, because, well, now it keeps her face warm, but before she had a pretty mermaid mask, and she liked it. So, all of her friends have seemed to adjust. My four-year-old will wear a mask, he seems to be fine. I think if it means that business operates, and that we have these teachers able to work, and the students at school, and the university students still here on our campus, which I think is extremely important to the city, I don't understand why I can't ask other folks to do what I ask my four-year-old to do. So, with that, once we've discussed this and have more development of what that amendment would be, I would support some sort of mask usage. I think that we've got some good steps to align with what UND is doing, and I don't know that I support the $250. So, I think that what Councilmember Weigle discussed makes sense to me. So, there's, thank you.
Mr. Sandy, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, Ms. Mock, thank you so much. I, boy, this is really, really awful. I appreciate Ms. Dockler doing all of her work. I also really appreciate everyone that came to the meeting tonight to speak and offer both opinions and facts. I will say that I'm not much of a fan of hyperbole and innuendo. It has never swayed my opinion, and so, for the people that were, that come up and use the "you're not this" and "you're not that," you know, I believe that all of that discussion is a waste of our time, because we have more important things to do than to listen to people's opinions when they're accusing. For me, this is all about the school district. Mr. Cavami and I, I think, have been relatively consistent with the fact that I believe we need to keep the students in school. I coincidentally have, in the last half an hour, I've heard from my wife and my kids who look at this differently. And they, my twins who now have to wear masks every day during school, and my wife are all of the opinion that they're ready to homeschool now, because they think it's ridiculous that they have to wear masks in school all day long, knowing that they're separated more than six feet in the school district, as well as take all their precautions that they need to. And, you know, I'm fortunate that my twins are 16 years old now, they drive their own cars, and they have the wherewithal where they couldn't actually do all their schoolwork from home. Unfortunately, that's not the situation for all students within the city of Grand Forks. And I know for a fact that we really need the schools to stay open and the students to have the capability of being in school, because it's very important for their parents to be able to work. I will go against the opinions of the people that are the closest to me in my life, and I will support mandating masks in our community, because I believe it's of the utmost importance to keep the school districts, or at least give the school administration and the school board the confidence to hopefully keep kids in our schools. I am not a supporter of the resolution as it's presented today, not because I don't think Ms. Dockler did a good job of it, but because I believe we should all be in this together. I've been saying this for a while. I think if we're going to do this, the mayor should execute an executive order, because of the timeliness of an executive order, rather than multiple readings and multiple meetings related to changing an ordinance. So, if we have to go down the pathway of a resolution, so be it. I would support the friendly amendment of removing the $250 fine, as well as having it related to the community dashboard, on the health officers dashboard. But I would prefer that we table the resolution altogether, take a vote in support of having the mayor issue an executive order and move on. Thank you, Ms. Mock.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Vien?
I guess my question, I'm just following up on what Mr. Sandy said. His hope was that we would table the motion, is that right? Could you repeat that, Mr. Sandy?
I, you know, I don't see any need for doing a resolution for an ordinance change, knowing that it's going to take a few weeks to do it. If we're serious about requiring masks, the fastest way to do it is with an executive order by the mayor. I believe if the council is in agreement that masks are in order in our community, then we should suggest to the mayor that he should author an executive order tomorrow and move on.
Mr. Gostad, did you have something?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit about, in anticipation of the question, we did a little research on the distinction between a resolution and an ordinance, particularly when there isn't, and I'll speak to the issue, when there isn't the penalty, so to speak. There's case law that, in North Dakota, that says a resolution is different than an ordinance, in that an ordinance is a continuing regulation of a permanent rule of conduct. And a, but a resolution is in the nature of being temporary, an option, or an administrative act, and is not necessarily the law, so to speak. So, if you were going to go down the path of imposing the sanction or the penalty, it would seem to me that the two readings is going to be required, you're going to have to publish it. But if it's going to be a resolution that is not what I would deem to be mandatory, because I view something mandatory as that there's a consequence for not necessarily following. It's a directive, maybe, or you're urging certain conduct, then I think the resolution could be adopted fairly easily by the city council without necessarily the need for a second reading, because you're not creating an ordinance, you're not amending, you're not having that published in your ordinance book, those type of issues, it becomes more temporary. And I think that's the, what Councilmember Dockler was talking about, is it's something that is temporary for the time being, and it doesn't have that penalty phase.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
No, I appreciate the discussion as well. I've obviously been, you know, pretty forthright in my reluctance to do a mandate, you know, from the beginning. You know, obviously, numbers are increasing. I've always felt it was the private business and the private individual to make their choice. As we're infringing on possibly the ability of schools to continue, it's, you know, it's becoming far more concerning. I think that, you know, while masks may help, I don't think that's the end-all, be-all. I think for some reason, we equate that the only way we can save this or save that is to have a mask mandate, and that, to me, there's a lot of things we need to do, a lot of things in private settings, a lot of responsibility that needs to take place regardless of what we mandate or setting any restrictions. So, I guess I'm interested to see what happens here with council and go from there.
Mr. Weber.
First of all, it's been portrayed that this has been sort of a 50-50, that half of the population are for, half are against, half of the science promotes, half of the science is against. Over the last week, 10 days, we've received, I believe all of us have received dozens, perhaps I've received close to 100 emails. All have been in favor of a mask mandate, some form of mask requirement. The business argument, what our businesses need are healthy customers, and businesses and employees are currently caught in the crosshairs of this. This is putting them in a difficult situation. In fact, city government is, our local businesses, not 100%, but by my experience, the vast majority of our local businesses feel caught in the crosshairs, especially because city government is putting our responsibility to address public health on their heads. As we saw with the Hugo's Mask Study, simply by indicating that there's a policy, we change people's behaviors. And the behaviors that we've had have resulted in 1,700 healthcare workers dying across the country. So, I want this done for our local businesses. We can't separate public health from economic health, and it's my understanding that the business community very much wants us to do this. Finally, if we're looking to the science, I don't want to get into a match about my sources versus your sources, but, Mr. Waterman, I believe that all of those sources that you presented were from back in March and April, when, yes, we did not yet understand much about COVID, and both the CDC and the WHO were sending out confusing mixed messages. Over the last several months, those messages have been quite clear. If you go to the CDC website now, the first thing you'll see is "wear a mask." Dr. Burks was just here. This is the Corona Response Coordinator for the White House Coronavirus Task Force. She called for wearing a mask. And so, in the spirit of compromise asked by Councilmember Weigle, again, I will make a motion to amend the original motion to drop the $250 fine. I believe that would make it possible for this to be passed and be put into effect with all possible haste, and that's my current motion. Thank you.
There's a motion to amend approving the resolution. Is there a second? Mr. Weigle?
I just have a question for Mr. Weber.
Oh, we need a second before we can have discussion. Does anybody wish a second? How about this, all second for the sake of discussion. Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Weber, would you be willing to go along with the second motion, or the second amendment that I proposed regarding when this will expire? Ultimately, I'd like, I'd love to see Mayor Bocinski do the executive order as well, but I think.
That's my preference as well.
But I think if we have a definitive, I think what's important to the community is, we understand where we're at. I think when we leave something like this so open-ended, typically, we have an emergency resolution, it's, we see it with the flooding, we do it because of the fact that there's opportunity for funding, right? We don't typically focus on that emergency declaration all that much. I think this is different. I think if people have the opportunity to see whether the masks are making an impact or not, whether numbers are continuing to go up or go down, I think it gives some people something to work towards, versus just saying, "Well, it's in place until the city council decides that it no longer is." And I, that's what I like. I like setting a goal out there, trying to reach that goal, and making progress towards it.
Here's my concern about that. I've said this several times, I feel that we've squandered a real opportunity. If we go back to the summer when our numbers were low, and we would have taken some more proactive measures, we might have avoided this. More directly relevant, when the students came back, it was completely predictable that we would see an increase in infection rates. But President Armacost, you did an amazing job of addressing that, and I feel that had the community supported you more fully back then, we would not be in the situation we are now, and that we would have been more fully able to take advantage of the fine work that was done at UND. At this point, I'm inclined to agree with you, Councilmember Weigle, but I'm not sure exactly what it is you're looking for. If it's simply moving from red to orange, I would be concerned about that. Can you give me a clearer idea of what you're looking for in the second part of the motion, or the compromise motion?
I was looking for red to orange, but would even be willing to compromise to yellow. Like I said, I'm not a fan of it, but I came here with good intentions to compromise and work towards a goal with the rest of you, knowing that whether I voted no or not, it was going to pass.
I'd be happy to make that second compromise motion as well. So, what I'm looking for is an amended motion to drop the $250 fine, and to, the resolution would take effect on, hopefully, can, Mr. Gostad, can the resolution take effect immediately with the vote?
Yeah, it could. The way it's drafted is it was effective November 3rd. And here's, and I want to go back and make sure that the council understands, is that with that penalty, there are due process issues that need to be addressed. The other thing is, is that the way it's drafted, it's up to $250. Don't even know, we don't know what that fine would be.
Good.
So, somebody would have to, the judge would have to make that determination.
Can we drop that entire clause, then? That's the intention of my motion.
Correct. And with those type of, it's a resolution, it seems like it's the council then urging the citizens to wear a mask, because it, from my opinion, if you don't have those type of enforcement mechanisms, it doesn't become a mandate, it becomes an urging for the citizens to wear masks under these set of circumstances.
A resolution encouraging mask wearing, yes. And I believe that was the intention. And so, and also, in the spirit of compromise, the resolution shall take effect immediately, and shall remain in effect until the local public health director's dashboard is showing a risk level of yellow. Is that consistent? Yes. So, that would be my amendment motion. Would you second that, Councilmember Michael?
Be happy to.
Don't you have a second?
Here, Mr. Vien, I believe.
Don't we have a motion?
It changed again. It changed again.
There's a motion and a second, and a motion to amend in a second. So, this is an additional amendment. Mr. Gostad, can we do this, or can we?
Trying to figure out where we're at.
Yes.
As I understand, there was a motion to amend, and that only incorporated the penalty, correct?
And I'd be willing to withdraw that. Would you be willing to?
So, he would be willing to withdraw that and make a new, so I'll withdraw my second.
It's much cleaner if he withdraws it and restates his motion to amend. And I want to make sure you understand that a second and a vote on that amendment is not a vote in favor of the particular, it's just to amend the draft that you'd be voting on.
Yes. So, Mr. Weber, you will withdraw the amendment on the floor, and then you are going to make a new one?
Yes. And the new one, I'll state it one more time, is to completely drop the clause about the $250 fine, and to amend the final clause to state, "This resolution shall take effect immediately, and shall remain in effect until the cities, until the local public health director's dashboard is showing a risk level of yellow." And I believe that's Councilmember Weigle's intention.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second for an amendment.
Yes, and just so that, I understand that then, by removing that penalty, there just is no penalty with respect to this resolution, correct?
Yes. So, now we've got a motion to amend the resolution on the floor. So, Mr. Cavami, did you have a point?
I was just curious if, Mr. Gostad, if you had any familiarity with the, whatever was passed in Fargo, because I believe it was an executive order by the mayor, is that correct?
That's my, that's my understanding, yes.
So, an executive order by the mayor, and was it the language a mandate or a recommendation?
The language, as I viewed the, what the mayor in Fargo wrote, there were no penalties. So, I know that he used the term "mandate" in there, but I, again, without, I mean, again, we've done research, and I think you've read my memo on this, that there is a distinction between a mandate, that when there's a mandate, there's consequences for not following it. So, I'm not, I know he used the term "mandate" in his executive order, but there really isn't any consequence for not following that, what the mayor issued down there. I think there was something about, that it didn't prevent. mayor issued down there. I think there was something about, that it didn't prevent some business owner from asking local law enforcement to come in and, and remove somebody for trespassing if they were violating their, the business's rules, which is the normal, that, that really didn't change anything. It didn't create a penalty in my, in my estimation. So I think in, in my opinion, and they may have a different view of what a mandate is down in Fargo, but my opinion is that if there is no consequence, it doesn't constitute a mandate. It's more of an urging or a directive of the citizens to wear a, a mask.
Sure. I guess I ask that only in that, in my opinion, I agree with Council President Sandy, that I would like to ask Mayor Bochensky to consider everything that's said here, and, rather than have us do something that might not be perceived as having any sort of authority, at least an executive order, even without a mandate, would be perceived as something that I'm hoping that people would consider, just like going to a grocery store, there's that requirement to go in, even though there is not a penalty.
May I respond?
Yes.
And, and I think that authority exists with the mayor, and whether you ask him, or the mayor would have that discretion. I, I'm not sure the council can necessarily direct a mayor to issue an, an executive order. I mean, he could certainly consider the, the comments tonight and make a decision, one way or the other, but I don't think the council can necessarily mandate, if I can use that term, the mayor to, to take a certain action.
That's understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Dockler? Mr. Vean?
No, if, I think, I, I do like the way that you've reworded the amendment now, getting it to the yellow, I think is what we said with the, and listening to what our attorney has talked about between a resolution and a ordinance, seems to make sense. We, with the resolution, we can implement this quicker, obviously, than if we did an ordinance. An ordinance would have to have a first reading and a second reading, and we would go through quite a lengthy process. This does get something on the books as quickly as possible. I think it doesn't eliminate us from doing an ordinance, if that be, that we were looking for a penalty. I mean, that, that's something that could still happen beyond passing the resolution. But this gives, with the urgency of where we are, this does, this is probably one of the most urgent things that we can do within our abilities, we'll say. But again, I wouldn't say it takes away the option of making, of having a penalty through a ordinance, if, again, we felt that's the next step. And, you know, we talked some time ago about having a plan for how we might move up, and as it's gotten worse, we would have to implement more. I agree with Mr. Weber about having tried, done something earlier, because now we're being more reactive than proactive. But, but again, this is at least putting something in place, and that's why I would support this. And I wouldn't turn away from the fact of looking at an ordinance should the time come. So I'm in supportive of, I think, the amendment that has been made.
All right. So are we ready to vote on the amendment? Mr. Sandy, are you clear?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All in favor of amending the proposed resolution to remove the fine and attach the roll-off to the health officers dashboard? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. So that amendment passed unanimously. So now we come back to the resolution as amended. Is there a further comment from anyone, further discussion points? Mr. Mayor, anything further? Okay. Mr. Sandy, anything from you?
No, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the, of approving the resolution as amended? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, for civic engagement and public discourse in a very respectful manner. Mr. Cavami, did you have some?